It's Monday, October 24th. It is 1:30 PM. This is a continuation of our budget work sessions that we had this morning. This afternoon, we're going to continue with preliminary decisions. Robin, passing it straight back to you.
Yes, thank you Commissioner. We're going to jump right in to back where we left off. And that is with the preliminary decisions. Thank you, I'm gonna just click on this. We're doing preliminary decisions on the midterm budget. And we have made our way to the capital policy requests. My way. So Nicole, where, which, yes, so it is number 13. Number 13, capital policy. We are just moving right along. So the capital policy requests align with the CIP. And there are only a couple items in here that I would draw your attention to. Otherwise, you've had an opportunity to review the CIP and this list on many occasions. The first one that I would draw your attention to is line 1 on page 1. The change request number is M25C2. It is the additional funding needed for the countywide security project. And as you know, the project had been assumed to be $800,000 project. And when the, well, this says that the board approved additional funding of $500,000. But you have not approved that amount yet to bring the total project to 1.3 million. So this request adds $500,000 to the project. What you did approve was spending the first, it was around, I want to say it was around $300,000 on the three highest priority projects at TCOM 911, the coroner's office, and building 5 for security. And we are asking that this funding be added to the project to continue for the remaining items on the list.
I have a question.
Yeah, go ahead.
Close the cameras.
Is that gonna come from the bonded money or REIT money?
This would come out of REIT, real estate excise tax.
Why wouldn't it be part of the upgrade to the courthouse, I guess is what I'm wondering.
Parts of the items, some of the items on the list could be part of the courthouse upgrade. But what, very few of them actually. Because buildings 1, 2, 3, and I think 4 were completed in the first phase of the courthouse security projects. And now what you have are buildings that are mainly not on this campus. The fairgrounds, public health, public works, these are not.
We have Medic 1 and 2, right?
I think Medic 1's in there.
Medic 1, I thought was in, in with TCOM. No.
It's.
Well, we own the building.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Didn't we upgrade the TCOM building already?
So we're working on the TCOM. That was, that was the, one of the ones that you had approved.
That was one of the priorities, so I think we get to do a benefit.
The cameras and the TCOM.
Anyway, I'm just wondering why we don't save for what real estate excise tax could be used on, whether it's parks or something else, and use the bond money or using the real estate money to pay off the bond.
Totally, well, REIT 1 is being used to pay off the bond. But the $50 million in bond proceeds is pretty much consumed, totally consumed by the projects here on campus. So this, these buildings are not buildings 1, 2, 3, or 4. These are, these are, again, public health on Lily, Public Works on Tilly, the fairgrounds.
Are we, are we assuming or calculating that there's not gonna be much of a change in REIT 1 activity because of the local economy change?
We have actually assumed, as you saw in the REIT forecast, and you'll, that we projected a downturn in revenue, negative growth if you will, in 2023 and 2024 before we assumed it starts to rebound.
And then, so you're still, you think there's enough money to make that all fit?
Yes, we'd be happy to pull up the financial plan again.
Well, I can only go whatever you're telling me on that issue, so if you think so, okay. I'll leave it on the same basis.
Commissioner Mansour.
I'm gonna maybe ask the county manager, because he's good at taking us back and reminding us of the conversations we had. I remember a conversation on this where we, I remember asking, you know, is there an example of where we use these cameras to solve a crime or come some, some positive benefit? And I don't, so there was, that was my kind of one scrap of, of a long discussion we had that I remember, and I don't really remember where the board landed. And I get nervous about, not that staff's doing anything untoward or anything, but I do get nervous when, you know, it's things, things come up a few months later and we've forgotten the nuances of our discussion. And it's like, oh yeah, let's do this. And I can't remember, I mean, there was a reason why this was somewhat controversial.
Right.
Even though it's not general fund and it's, it's, you know.
Again, that's why I've paused at this item and didn't ask you to just approve.
And I agree wholeheartedly that the bond money is gonna be, every penny's gonna be needed to do whatever we can do here. But, but I guess then the question is, and I think we all kind of agree that there's, there's some value, you know, to, to these different pieces of the cameras. I think you said it's most cameras. The question is, is the value that we're getting, you know, versus whatever the funding source is and what that looks like? Did we go over the REIT funding plan at the time that we had that discussion? I mean, you're saying today that you think it's all gonna check out in terms of being within capacity.
Yeah, could you remind us which folder they would find the REIT financial plan in?
Sure.
REIT 1?
So from what I remember from the conversation, and please correct me if I'm wrong, anyone, is that we agreed to move forward on certain projects, TCOM 911, just because of, they said that they were willing to pitch into it. And we agreed to do two additional projects just because of kind of the dire need of their situation and where they were in terms of security. And we agreed not to move forward on other projects because that, you know, your question was like, well, you know, if, if we expand on these, like, you know, what's the saving cost to us? Are they gonna help us catch, like, you know, more crime? Like, what, what is actually? And so we decided to pause on the rest of the information. Now, my question's in regards to the $500,000, is it like a million? Well, that, the REIT has been pushed up.
You had, yes.
The total project was worth a million and then we, since we decided to only advance on certain projects?
The total project at one point had been assumed to be $800,000.
Okay.
The bids came in at 1.3 million.
Okay.
The board approved for me to spend a small chunk of the $800,000 on the TCOM 911, and they are pitching in the coroner's office, a 24/7 operation, another 24/7 operation, and building 5 for security for elections, because they're the current election center. So I can't remember exactly how much that came to. I think 300, 300 and some thousand out of the 800. But I'm asking for an additional $500,000 to complete the list. And I'm happy to find the list.
Right.
But I do remember that the conversation was centered on cameras because they are mainly cameras.
So then this is an additional 500 to the 300 that we approved for those three. So they, this five.
This is 500 on top of the 800 to do the total project, finish the.
So if we don't approve this, you've still got up to 800, another $500,000 to spend.
Roughly.
You just, you do about half of what's left.
With the board's approval, with the, and I would not do any of it without the board.
If you could just take you back when you were approving the 2022, 2023. It was a, a good conversation that we went through a specific project related to the security cameras. And you're growing, agreed on the bundle, which you allocated $800,000, this Robin said. We move ahead with that direction on the board, all the projects on that list. And as you, as we experience, you know, cost increases on anything, we find ourselves that it was way too much, 1.3 versus the, the budget authority of 800,000. We came to the board asking an additional budget authority. The board said, no, really, you know, what is the value added? You know, what is the investment, the return to that investment? And it was a good conversation, as I recall. And, and it's difficult to say that if you have a camera, you have a video footage, all of a sudden you have this many arrests, right? It's, it's difficult because there is not that correlation that, for instance, and we see requests, ICE requests almost on a weekly basis to release video footage. For, here in the courthouse, for instance, and it's not just for county staff, for individuals who come and visit as part of the public records. They would like to have a specific area, on a specific time and place. Because in some instances, they have been a little bit of altercation. And they like to see that. And a good piece of information as to how we capture that, you may remember when ICE agents came to the courthouse, that was a key piece of information that we had in terms of the, of the time, location. And we walked through as to some of the activities, piece all together. So I, I'm not here to say that, you know, we, you invest in, on, on cameras, all of a sudden it will result in 20 arrests. I won't be able to say that. And it certainly provides a, a, another tool for us to conduct business. Probably health, for instance. We have seen a lot of break-ins, vehicle break-ins. And this has been a project that we wanted to implement there because they don't have video footage. Whether that is gonna result in arrests, but it will give us the tools to pursue something. We have seen a lot of break-ins in color converters. And.
But that was on, right here?
Right here, but also in, in public works, they don't have that ability to see.
But let's use the example, that happened here, was it captured on camera?
That one was here, and, and it was a blind spot on the system.
Yeah, I, I. I remember Commissioner Edwards, I think, and I agreed with him saying, you know, something like improved lighting, that's gonna make employees feel safe, it's gonna deter crime. You're not gonna see a direct correlation, but, but you're gonna, I think it's a reasonable guess that you're gonna be able to say that's creating a positive benefit. Frankly, the camera, I disagree with you. The camera should result in a correlative arrest, like that. What is the camera doing if it's not resulting in an arrest of the person that did it? It's not stopping the crime, it's not making anyone, I mean, I guess maybe if I know that there's cameras out there, that makes me feel better, not if it's dark and late at night. I mean, so I really think there should be a direct correlative result of the camera resulting in solutions to these criminal activities. And we haven't, we didn't hear any examples of that.
And the reason that I cannot provide an example, because I cannot talk on behalf of Olympia PDE or the sheriff's office.
But didn't we bring it in now, six, six months ago?
For instance, we had a break-in here. The Olympia PDE was here, they are order video footage of that particular location. They have the individual in place. I don't know what they're gonna do with that information because I'm not, I, I, it will be unfair for me to, to give you a response that I don't have. How law enforcement is gonna do that?
Having REIT 1 as the source of connection to things that are going on in this campus and having met with, we, my monthly meetings with Superior Corps, prosecuting attorneys, having, and knowing how stretched we're gonna be to try to make the needs of this upgrade with inflation and increased supply chain and increased costs on capital projects, makes me very nervous to, in advance of all that, spend another half a million on these cameras that I don't have confidence are gonna yield fruit for the, for the community's constituents.
Even cameras in the banks don't seem to work, really. We can get a guy running around out here, now they're gonna have a mask on for the next five years over the virus thing, you know, regardless. I do agree that more lighting, because criminals hate lighting and good citizens like lighting. It's, it's really a simple equation. But the other piece of that, if we have more cameras, we're gonna have more requests. Who's gonna spend the time recovering all that material? And, and assessing whether it's good material or not good material. It's just a lot of things that, you know, who's gonna be the one that, that watches the camera all the time?
Nobody, nobody watches the camera.
They're motion censored or something.
And also when the county manager approves, it's just a procedural step.
I know, somebody else does.
The county manager does not watch the cameras, just to be clear.
I know you don't watch the camera, but it just, it's, it's more work for nothing accomplished by the time it's all over. Somebody puts a lot of time in reviewing, oh, we got a picture of that guy out there jacking up the car, and he's under there for 20 seconds with his electric saws all, taking the converter off. But we don't, we don't solve the problem. And actually, when we catch the guy, they don't do anything about it anyway. They don't make him pay for the cameras, don't make him pay to replace the, the whole deal. It, it seems like it's throwing more money, more good money after bad, where lighting might make people feel better and criminals less likely to do things. That's all. It seems like it'd be a lot cheaper to do some lighting in today's day and age with, with the bright lights without much electrical consumption.
So when we get the security study, and remember in 20, gosh, what's it, 2018? We did a, so yeah, only one, only one commissioner, keep remembering this. But we did a countywide security study, and these were the recommendations for these buildings.
Oh, well, no, they're nice, I'd like to have it, but it isn't like we got an endless fund. That's, that's my concern.
That's absolutely true. REIT 1 is the only fund we have, other than general fund, for most of our facilities. And it's gotta cover all the facilities, not only the campus.
This is, this is the county or financial platform, REIT 1.
Oh, you know, I'm not saying that we don't have the money to do it, but I think there's probably, I'd, I'd rather spend it on some park activity or something that people are gonna enjoy. I don't, I'm just used to that.
We'll spend REIT 2 on that.
Well.
That's coming up, REIT 2.
Yeah, we'll talk about REIT 2, but.
But I just, I don't see the benefit. If we didn't approve that, there's still half a million dollars that's been appropriated to, and, I mean, is, is the whole million gonna be used in 2023, you're thinking?
So I'm looking at the list now, um, we could.
What is the next priority?
So the next thing after building 5 is, building 6 needs access control for their doors.
That's public defense.
That's in public defense. That could, that could actually grow, go into the study. And then we have the fairgrounds for the Heritage Building and the Expo Hall. It's all about the cameras. Family and juvenile court is including duress buttons and alarms and lockdown buttons. So that is $70,000. The public health building is going to add access controls to their doors and duress buttons and a lockdown button, and that's $83,000. So we can do that. Tilly is cameras, duress buttons, and doors, 300,000.
So that's the big one.
Yeah, that's the big one. And then there are.
Duress buttons at, at Public Works?
Yep.
And that does what, like?
So.
Why don't you call us the last question?
Call us finally.
Yep.
In case somebody gets mad at Public Works and.
Well, you know, they do have, they do have cash transactions there.
They keep $100 there.
You know, they, they, they do receive, you know, all the, all the utility payments they receive there.
So.
Is it a robbery at Public Works?
I'm just, I'll be honest, I'm, you know, this, this, this was something that was done kind of before I came on, and I was kind of one of the first ones where I was like, I'm not sure about it. But then with the new information about moving forward with like, the priorities, like, I was like, okay, well, let's move forward on those, especially since we have a willing partner. I'm, to add the additional 500, I know we have, we're half a million. I know we have the capacity in REIT to be able to do it.
Just because you can doesn't mean you should. I mean, I'm a big proponent of that.
I'm just, I feel like we can try to do with, as much as we can with what we, we have, which was half a million dollars, and try to get as far as we can. And then we can reassess next year on like, moving on to the next level.
I could certainly do that.
That's good, I feel.
I, because right now, I'm just.
And also just to be, to be, for the conversation, when the board decided just to go with a couple of projects, we as staff said, we're gonna bring this item back for your consideration. So here we are.
In the midterm, yep.
So here we are, and, and that is the decision.
I don't want any dark spots around the courthouse anyways. I'd like to have lights, I don't know, it just makes it.
So lighting, better lighting is part of the campus project. And it's something that we've talked about at the annex parking at the atrium.
Oh boy, have you seen activities down there, the garbik's hanging around there? There's a lot. I don't know, I'm just leaving it at that for now.
All right, so I am going to ask for a, and I think I know what your answers are gonna be, thumbs up or thumbs down on the additional funding for the countywide security? Two, three thumbs down, that's fine. The other item in the capital policy package that I would draw your attention to is on page 2, it's lines 12 and 13. This is the initial funding for the Country Club Road and Green Cove Creek culvert replacement project.
Which one is that one, I'm sorry?
That is on page 2, it's lines 12 and 13, the very top of the page.
Okay.
What, we're, are we just taking for granted, we're doing the rest of them?
Well, that is gonna be my question after we look at this one.
Oh, okay.
The only reason that I bring your attention to this particular one is because it is the beginning of this project. The bulk of the project is in future years, 20, 2024 and beyond. And you have reviewed this project, just when we look at the REIT 2 funds, you may wanna think about what the structure of the funding is for the project, but.
Yeah, this is part of the financial plan, the Polar Works presented to you. There's gonna be a combination of, of road fund, in this case, stormwater money. You will see in REIT 2 as additional request, and also Polar Works is gonna be applying for a public works, public works trust fund to do the project.
Can I, if I remember correctly on this conversation, I thought there was gonna be, because there was a lot of conversation about the funding aspects of it. And I know Commissioner Mansour had a lot of questions in regards to, and they said they were gonna come down with more information. So just connected with this and kind of how we left off that conversation.
I believe, I, I believe they did, and you, and you did a green light to go ahead with that financial plan.
We did eventually.
We did eventually? There we go, I'm just missing that second part of things.
No, you, you're right, it was the first, and we requested to come back with the financial plan. They came back, that was the.
And then they came back with that permission and that.
And this is just really following up on the, on that decision.
But this is the first, this, this gives the appropriation authority to go ahead.
What have we got for grants on this project?
For grants, I don't recall a specific grant, but they're gonna be applying for a Polar Works trust fund loan.
Right.
And that loan's gonna be paid by, by the road fund.
You know, that's gonna be like $10 million or something, right?
No, no, the, I believe they, they, 4.3 million is the, is the.
And then we're gonna take the rest out of REIT roads and all that stuff?
Stormwater.
Stormwater, how much is the total project?
I think it's close to nine. Including engineering.
I just, you know, like, what is it, about 100 feet of culvert underneath there? I suppose, something like that, because it's pretty steep on both sides. It, it, I kinda take this back to the railroad car replacement over on Logan Road Bridge. I mean, it, it's so much cheaper to do things with common sense. I don't understand how we can't put a boring machine underneath there that bores a six-foot hole or something, and the casing goes right along with it, that it can't be a lot cheaper than $10 million.
Yeah, we, we sort of explored that option, I think you asked the same question.
I did, I was trying to touch on it.
And, and I think if it was a dry land, and similar to what we bore under the railroad tracks on the trail.
Well.
You know, the extension, remember? Yeah, we, we use that, that technology, and here's, you work on water. And there is a very, a very extreme time and restriction as to what we call is the fish window, where you can conduct construction activities in the creek without harming salmon.
But there can be a pump that's running down there and keeps it dry during the construction phase. They do have those, big, big pumps that are run on diesel or liquid motor, and they keep it dry while you're working. I just, I can't get over the $10 million that we can't come up with a way more reasonable expenditure on that.
So 7.35, which was in the CIP, so that's better than 10.
Well, yeah, but I mean total, I'm talking about the total project.
Some of its financials this year's.
No, closest.
I'm right now, and, and even, I don't know, I know it's, but there's a, part of it's collapsed or something right now in there, part of the way. It's still working, it just collapsed, it's a problem, it might quit at any time. If it quits, if it collapses all the way, then we got an emergency, and we got FEMA to pay for it.
Well, not necessarily, not necessarily.
No. FEMA doesn't have the money for those types of. FEMA doesn't have the money for those types of, that's the wrong kind of emergency.
Yeah, it's it's has to be a declared emergency, that's the.
Right.
Well, it'd be declared emergency eventually if they're road washed, no?
By by whom? By the governor? I doubt it.
No.
Uh, not the president.
We wouldn't, it wouldn't raise to the level of loss for FEMA. So.
But it's like to remind, it it remind the board really, the board approved this alternative.
Uh.
To move forward.
We can do one and anything else.
Okay.
And the board, and the board approved the financial strategy behind this project. If you'd like to revisit those decisions, that that's as a different conversation. That at this point is this is what we're bringing to you based on the decisions you made earlier in the year.
Okay, alright, everything else in this package is aligned with the CIP. And I don't recall any conversation around any of the items in the CIP. Or in previous conversations other than those two that you just went over. Many of the items uh in Public Works is just moving money into the future years. Um, and making increases to the cost of the projects, but again, all reflected in the CIP. And none of this from the general fund. So unless there are any specific projects that you would like to discuss, I am going to ask you to. With the exception of the one that you've already said no to, say yes to everything else in this package.
Questions and concerns, comments?
I can go line by line if you'd like, but.
Where, well, where, where's that Pleasant Gate Elementary Project money coming from?
Which line are you on, Commissioner?
Oh, I'm on fourteen.
Line fourteen is coming from the roads and uh the road fund, the road construction fund.
And a lot of times we get grant money from uh. That safe to school.
Yes, and see the revenue, see the revenue that goes with this, it is a.
One point four million we're receiving from the state, from the federal grant.
Safe route to schools grant, yep.
Oh, we are hitting something, yeah, okay, okay.
Yeah, one point four, yeah.
Uh.
So it says the remaining required match of one hundred sixty five will be funded by the road fund, but. Um, they did receive the federal grant, that comes out to a total of one point four million.
That, that Tilly Road Bridge.
What line?
Uh, that's on fifteen, uh, what, where is that bridge at? Cause there's only a couple places on Tilly Road that I can recall that it's more of a culvert.
It's over uh Beaver Creek.
That's down on the other side of uh. The gravel pit area.
Yep.
Of Maytown area.
And they have a a grant that will pay for the bulk of this project.
Okay.
So basically what they will need is forty seven thousand. And they're. They anticipate receiving, so they haven't technically received the three hundred and three thousand grant yet.
We just put in for it instead of no guarantee we'll get it again.
If we don't do the, if they don't receive the grant, they won't go forward doing the project.
Oh, okay.
Okay.
And just because you approve it in this appropriation authority, they still have to come to you and say. Wow.
No.
Other items?
What are we doing about the lighting, we're taking that out, more lighting?
The what lighting?
The security.
Security, yeah.
That's that, you've already said no to those, I'm asking you to say yes to everything else.
But you, you said it.
But we're gonna keep up with the, with that West Olympia thing, the country club with that code, I mean, I know we talked about that project, it's just. I think we're gonna be stretching her out pretty thin as time goes on here, okay. Okay, I'll, I'll go with you.
Alright, so thumbs.
Can I do that under duress, does it still count?
No, I mean, no, no, no commissioner is under duress.
Nope, you can always do it, it comes down.
Okay.
We can, we can bring some duress buttons for you too.
How about an easy button?
That's not a the security project, or you know, yeah.
Yeah, that, that's not a couple of facilities button, right?
Yeah, exactly, um, so.
But like with culvert, I know that they've acquired several grants and um. I connected with Congresswoman Strickland to help us with um some funding with that and so I know she wrote a lot of letters of support and she's. Helping us with with that, um, so I'm hoping. That comes through, I don't wanna jinx it.
Thank you.
I was on the commissioner, I didn't.
Alright, thumbs, thumbs up or down for all except one of the capital uh policy.
I don't know, Black Lake, I wanna put some landing strip metal in that bridge there too, they won't let me do that.
Just to ask you about the, like, I've heard some chatter about federal assistance and Congresswoman Strickland being involved and I, but I didn't know the details and I. It's been on my list for many Tuesdays and Thursdays to ask you about that and we've never had time.
Yeah.
I, I, I kept the commissioners checking for this Thursday, hoping the this conversation will end by Wednesday, so we can keep time on the table.
Okay, okay, well, the, well, the other thing about that is, and I know there's other grants, because I was working to make sure that our grant, uh. I was working with the folks at Riot thirteen to include, so this culvert, there's two more upstream. That are like kind of on our list, little bit down the chain, but if we include them in like, in a, in a complete package, then. It's not just a road project, it becomes much more, like, you really open up a lot of fish passage.
Oh, so maybe we can get some money there.
Yeah, so we're trying to work that secondary angle, so we've included the two upstream um um culverts as, at least in some certain applications.
Okay.
To try to maximize our um our attractiveness to the. Whoever's making the decisions. Squawk, Smile and Tribe's up with that.
Good questions and um, before you vote on, you talk about the commissioners checking, but Commissioner Mejia has a crab commitment.
Thursday.
Thursday, Friday.
This week?
Yeah, so uh you like to keep for your commissioner words and commissioner message to have commissioners checking on Thursday, without Commissioner Mejia, which is.
I like to have us all here when we're talking about stuff, myself, I prefer that.
I'm sorry, I have a crab?
No, that's okay, I'd rather have you look at.
Yeah, it's not as good if we're not all here, that's the whole point of it, you have the three of us be able.
Right, okay, we'll cancel it, so, we're back to the body.
Yeah, okay.
Alright, back to the board, yeah. Alright, thumbs up or thumbs down?
Okay.
Two, three, thank you, alright. Um, next, we're gonna shift back into the operating budget and we're looking at maintenance level for non-general fund items.
Number fourteen.
Fourteen.
These items for the most part are maintenance level adjustments to internal service funds, there are a few minor items on this list. Um, that are not general fund, um, or none of this is general fund, so just a few items that are not internal services. And they are minor adjustments um to continue providing services at the current service level. So. Again, I would ask if there are any specific, you've been through this list many times, there is zero impact to the general fund. All of these funds have sufficient fund balance, uh, and all but. Two of them are internal services. So unless you'd like to talk about any one in particular, I'm gonna ask you to give a, a thumbs up to this list. About one, two, three thumbs up. Alright, um, now we're at a packet where we need to go line by line, this is a policy list, it is non-general fund. But we do ask you to look at policy for all the funds and.
Number eighteen.
Which line?
Package eighteen.
Eighteen.
Yep, this is policy, non-general fund, and I'll say upfront that none of these have any impact to the general fund. Um, so, starting at the top of the list, um.
These are ones we voted on, right?
You've not voted on anything, but you've seen them all at least twice.
Or that we did the, not the vote, but scoring.
The high, medium, low are on the general fund items.
Okay.
So these are all non-general fund. Um, line number one is an additional hundred and fifty thousand dollars for the auditor to buy election equipment, and what I need to tell you about this line. Is this really should have been a carryforward item, we've been contacted by the auditor's office, there ought to be a negative hundred and fifty thousand. Uh, in twenty two, so it has a net zero change, so thumbs up.
So this won't even take uh out of the election equipment fund anymore?
That's correct, it is a net zero impact, so thumbs, thumbs to this, thumbs up, three thumbs up.
Okay. Okay. Yeah.
Um, on lines two and three is to repay the loan from ERNR. Um, the repay E and R and R for the loan that it made to the REIT fund when we purchased. Um, the Mottman Building, it's a hundred and twelve thousand dollars.
And that's the interest, a hundred dollars.
That is the interest amount, thumbs, thumbs please.
On how, on, how much did?
Five, five point six million dollar loan.
And we only held that money for about two years, didn't we, was that about two years?
Yes.
What, what did we pay, six percent?
Yeah. God bless you, I would have to look at the resolution to find the amount of interest that the treasurer determined was fair.
So this just means we can use that.
We have to pay the interest when we pay the loan back.
And we pay it back to?
ERNR.
ERNR, huh?
Yep.
Then ERNR is pending on something else we need, right?
Yep.
So it isn't like we're losing much, I mean, it's not like it's going to a bank and buying a new.
That's exactly right, that we borrowed from ourselves and kept the money in house.
Okay, got, got it.
Alright, thumbs up, I see one, two, three thumbs up. The next one is the bonus for employees, it's a thousand dollar for every one of our employees. And we think it's thirteen thousand and five people, um.
Thirteen hundred?
Thir, gosh, thank you. Millions, thousands, um.
I think we have grown a lot.
One thousand three hundred and five FTEs, wow, the county has grown.
Whoa.
Um, and uh it includes all county employees.
Yeah, but we don't have fifteen hundred employees.
No, we have one thousand three hundred and five because some of those are part-time FTEs. And the one point five million includes benefits at approximately eighteen percent.
Alright, okay, that's right, that's the difference.
Yep, it's not just a flat thousand, we gotta pay benefits because it's pay.
Okay.
Pay.
What about the um, weren't we, okay, so.
You're proposing that that be paid from uh fund nineteen forty with lost revenue money.
That was that ten million, that was ten million.
So that's half of that, three million that's, I said, is in your pockets.
Yeah, that, didn't that start out at ten million?
Ten million, I have seven billion of that dedicated to general fund and you've got three million to spend and this spends part of it. And I would suggest, before we start making adjustments to this amount, that we would skip this.
Yeah, I was gonna suggest.
And talk about it in the, when you do the compensation conversation about COLA and bonus.
I, I, I think you need to be looking at the overall.
At the whole picture.
The whole picture, I was gonna suggest that um, if you can hold this decision.
Yep.
Makes sense.
Um, because I, I have uh. Other proposals for you to consider.
Okay.
Right, so we will come back to this. Line number five is uh extending the end date for the um public information specialist who is working on the new web design. We would extend that to March of twenty twenty three and that's paid with COVID funds, yes ma'am?
I had a note on my of. Just seeing how these projects have gone and how, how things seem to come up. And, you know, I know that um we had sent it to March and just. You know, because it's expected to be done in mid February, but just as everything's gone and the implementation. Would it serve us well to keep the position until May, that way at least we have. That coverage of the hiccups, the implementation, we know everything's working smoothly. And we're not caught in this difficult position later on.
I would take it through the end of June myself, but.
Well, then I like clean quarters.
Okay, can I?
Well, then, end of June for clean, for me, I feel just because. I've, I've seen how these projects have gone, how there's been multiple hiccups because of various.
For whatever.
For whatever reasons and.
That's a good point.
And so for me, it's might as well have that coverage and have.
That shouldn't.
Yeah, and it's covered with ARPA funds, so.
There's no impact on the general fund, yeah.
Now, I, I'm wondering about the line item that's coming out of, out of ARPA funds, because we've got it coming out of that. Basically out of the ten million dollars that it is.
Nope.
No, what do you do?
No, this is coming straight out of the federal money.
Federal money.
This is coming out of the quarter six, it's not coming out of your lost revenue.
This is not coming out of the ten. Okay, that was my question.
I made it, I made, I stretched.
Because out of, out of the federal money, you supported the implementation of the webpage.
Yes, yeah, okay, that's right, okay, good enough, got it.
Yep, so it comes, it comes out of.
Right.
So that one's good, through the end of June would be the change, what the.
What, Commissioner's voting with that, or?
Yeah. No, that makes sense, that's true, yep.
Majorments.
That's good.
Alright, so thumbs, thumbs up on this line item.
Yep.
Through June would be the change. Alright, next is um, a senior office assistant uh in central services to work the front desk at the atrium. You put a front desk in that building, we need to man it. There, I see one thumb up.
I'm gonna vote against that just for the principle at this point, till I'm uh figured this all out.
Say no, yep. So it's up to you to share my hand.
Give me a sec, I wanna look at my notes, one second. Uh, give me one second. Okay, so this one would initially come out of the general fund and then after that it would be covered through interfund costs?
It will not at any point come directly out of general fund, it will be paid by central services.
Okay.
Absorbed initially and then be worked into the interfund for starting next by any.
So no. That was my question, um, so since there's no general fund impact in that year, great.
So two to one, yes. The next item is for the equipment at the atrium in the breakout room for community planning and economic development. Um, this is an impact on the land use permitting fund and that fund has issues and I would recommend saying no to this.
Is that the one where there's seven hundred thousand?
Yes, that is the fund that's currently uh needs seven hundred thousand just to get through this year.
But then they're asking for the twenty five hundred for?
That, out of the stormwater fund, the five thousand would come out of the permitting fund on line seven. They're also asking for twenty five hundred in a second breakout room, uh also for equipment.
So twenty five hundred and.
It's.
How, how come you're not opposed, how come you're in favor of one and opposed?
I am opposed to line seven, I am recommending uh saying no to this because the land use permit fund is in dire shape right now. And you're going to have to deposit seven hundred and eight thousand just to get through this year and a million or more next year.
Are these two things something that the community planning and economic development budget can absorb?
Possibly. CPED this year, what would they revert? Jennifer, do you have a feel for that?
I, I don't know, I'll know tomorrow, though, we have a meeting with them on their financial plans.
We could come back to this with an answer to that question if they could absorb these.
Isn't that on the year-end projection?
Uh, the year-end projection that you have focuses on general fund, we do have a financial plan from them, but Jennifer's meeting with them tomorrow to update that. but Jennifer's meeting with them tomorrow to update that.
But, I mean, if they are reverting, it looks here like they're reverting.
Out of their general fund appropriation, they are reverting a small amount?
Yeah, two point one eight percent. Their, the general fund is close to fifty thousand dollars. I think I wanna say it's pretty small. It's thirty-two thousand.
They could certainly pay the hundred percent out of general fund.
So I'm wondering if this is something they could absorb for us?
So we could carry forward money this year and cover with general fund money for this equipment that they need?
Would that be for both line items then?
It would definitely be for the land use one. What about the stormwater one? They could afford it out of the stormwater fund.
Out of the stormwater fund.
Okay. Okay, for the stormwater, then. For number eight, I would say yes. Commissioners?
Well, no, I'm gonna take the same position.
Seven and eight are the same.
Your thumbs down to both of those? Okay, so.
I'm having thumbs down.
Your thumbs down to both of them. So those are no and no. Line nine is for medic one. This is for their unanticipated increase in contract operating costs. Six hundred and fifty thousand dollars out of the medic one fund.
I'm okay with that.
So there's one thumb up.
So this is for emergency services, oh.
Two thumbs up, three thumbs up, yes, yes. Um, then line number ten, that's on page three. Uh, this is also medic one. This is basic life support, also for contract increased operating costs out of the medic one fund. Yes, one thumb, two, three thumbs up. And then line eleven, also for medic one, this is equipment replacement, um, unanticipated costs uh, because everything costs more now, um, also out of the medic one fund. Up, thumbs up, two, three, yes, thank you. At the top of page four, you have lines nine, ten, eleven, and twelve are the rate increases for the water and utility, um, services in Boston Harbor, Tam O Shan, Beverly Beach, and Olympic View. The rate increases are five percent for Boston Harbor water, four point two five percent for Boston Harbor sewer, Tam O Shan water and sewer five percent increase and five percent for the Olympic View, um, sewer rates. And they will hold the public hearing on December fourth along with the budget hearings. This decision that you make now is to leave these in your preliminary budget until you hear from the public on December fourth.
December sixth.
December sixth. Thank you.
December sixth at four P M. Five P M. I don't know.
It's, it's during the budget. So I see one thumbs up.
Well, do we need to vote for this since we'll be having some of it?
Yes, you need to vote to leave it in the preliminary budget.
It's just the kind of guy who used to keep it in place.
Okay, well, I guess to have a public hearing.
Two, three thumbs up, great. Line twelve is a hundred and sixty thousand for the Capitol Lake Deschutes Estuary prob- project.
No.
You know that this money is not needed next year, so just say no to this.
Just scratch this.
We're, we're withdrawing this. So that is a withdrawn. Line thirteen is Public Works. This is a, um, road development review cost of services study, sixty thousand from the road fund.
That's their portion to continue to the fee study. Please study for one.
Wow, for the?
All the, all the permit fee study they were marking on.
How about health CPED?
All the health CPED, all of ones.
So like traffic impact fees or?
No, all the, all the, all the permitting fees.
Okay, what's the road part of it?
Because the, the road, they, uh, has to, they have to give permits to the, uh, right-of-way construction when the developer does work on the county's right-of-way, the county's road.
It's gonna cost sixty thousand, figure that out? Basically?
But that's their portion. It actually is gonna be more than that. You heard from Josh, the, the study thing is close to three hundred thousand. Because all the three departments are part of issuing permits.
Why is that in the context? Um, I mean, this has been something we've discussed multiple times and I think it needs to be done.
Okay.
I'll vote yes for it.
Okay.
Where was this number come up with? That's what, I mean, sixty percent, okay, if it's three hundred thousand, that's twenty percent. Twenty percent of all fees relate to something that I didn't even know had any connection to, building permit fees? That seems like a high percentage of the, of it for this particular department. I mean, doesn't really matter where the money comes from, I'm just curious.
Yeah, I, I'm not sure how they, um, displayed on participation was. I could probably give you that information.
I, I do think, if I remember it, I think this has to do with a person comes in, gets a building permit to build a house, they need access to a county road, consider a driveway.
Yeah, the driveway.
And wanted that permit. I think it's excessive, but I, I'm, I think all, everything is excessive, so.
So everything there is considered work and the right-of-way public works is the one who permits that.
They permit the.
Access.
And on occasion, they will say, hey, this, this has to be so far back from an intersection, so far from a curve. So there is some engineering.
There's a lot of, a lot of requirements, uh, for some developers to build frontage sidewalks in some areas or road improvements, a left tram lane, maybe required. Yeah, it does, so.
Who does this at Public Works?
Right here.
No, yeah, but who's, who's the person?
Todd.
So Todd does?
He is, he is the, the manager of that.
Okay.
How come we pay Todd anyway? Why can't he just do it?
Actually, it's funded by the fees.
Other questions about this? Did your questions get answered?
Because it's gonna get interrupted.
We could come back to this on Wednesday if you like.
No, I mean, I don't think it holds up my follow-up. I'm just, it's more just curious.
Okay.
Because I mean, I really didn't even think about the right-of-way part and that they're funding twenty percent of the whole fee study. I mean, we all know about the pieces, you know, that we. That's a small piece in my, in my head of the whole thing, so I just wonder why they get such a big cut of the fee, of the cost, but.
I mean.
I'm sure they've figured it out amongst themselves.
Yes.
I could probably bring back what how this split was, was done.
How this split was determined.
Yeah.
Great.
Okay, but I'm okay with, I mean, I want, we need it to go forward as Commissioner Mason.
All right, so thumbs, one, two, three thumbs up, great. We're gonna work through the next few and then when we hit foundational public health, we'll take a short break before we launch into that. Um, the next items fourteen, fifteen, and sixteen is to extend the end date for the accounting assistant um, who is assisting in public works for the conversion to the ERP. Public Works had a unique need for support in the ERP conversion because they are going to convert from CAMs, which does, they do a lot of their work in today, to TC Connect. So they had a particularly heavy lift. The, um, go-live date of the project got pushed out. So we are recommending approval of extending the end date for this position. Questions? I see one, two, three thumbs up. On line seventeen, this is also tied to the ERP project. Again, um, the go-live date got pushed out. We are asking that the project position, uh, end dates get pushed out, um, at least through August of twenty-three. That will enable us to stand the new system up and work through all changes required. This is being paid from the large system placement reserve. One thumb, two thumbs, three thumbs up. And line eighteen, uh, also related to the ERP project, um, beginning in January, we will start implementation of the budget module and, uh, we are requesting a, um, support FTE to, um, backfill while some of our budget staff are dedicated to the conversion to TC Connect for the budget module next year. We haven't even started on the budget module. Also to be paid from large system replacement reserve.
And that's a sixty-forty split, aren't they?
Uh, roughly, in the long term?
Yeah.
Thumbs, one thumb up.
I guess.
So this large system replacement reserves is just like, if it gets overused, then it gets, the rate, the rate gets raised and it gets evened out over?
It would, yep. Um, but this, these positions were all included in the cost of the, um, project and we're still coming in within the project budget.
It also is associated with the, uh, the bond, the issue for the large system replacement.
Yep.
Can I ask a question? Right, because we're seeing this with the public defense and so these positions are planned out for kind of this project because, but I'm wondering for kind of that project, right, where public defense is now really struggling, what wasn't that planned ahead?
So.
Different system.
Public defense, it's, it's not only a different system, but, but they're at a different stage.
I know, isn't, yeah, it's a different system.
So they've already, um, implemented their system and they are now asking for an applications deck to be embedded in their department that would need to be paid with general fund. So they're in the operational phase of their project. These positions are all about getting the project launched and working. So it's a different stage. And eventually, we, we may come in and tell you that we need a business applications tech to be able to run this system. We're not to that yet. We just gotta get it running. One thumb, two, three thumbs up, thank you. Uh, we are now to foundational public health for the next one, two, three pages of this. And Kurt is here to engage in a whiteboard exercise, but I would suggest that before we launch into that, we'll take a short break. Uh, two forty-five, we can meet in two forty-five. Okay.
Isn't all of it?
EM, and we left off at foundational public health. So Kurt Harding, you have joined us for that. Yes, yes. Thank you for being here, Kurt. And we have Robin Ritu on the Zoom. So what we're going to do now is we are on page five of the policy on general fund worksheet. And lines 19 through 20, 19 through 26 and line 28 are all foundational public health. So what we'll do is Kurt will walk you through the additional information, which he has distributed regarding foundational public health. And then we have a worksheet that shows how much money we have, how much we got last year, how that was allocated, how much is coming in this year and what the proposals are. Then we can go back, walk through the proposed budget change requests, have you say yea or nay to those, figure out how much money is left, and then see what your pleasure is for that. That's the plan for foundational public health. All right?
Why would we be objecting? I guess that's my question.
Why would we object to any of this?
Yeah, why?
Because you might have other priorities than what public health has proposed.
What could I spend that money on?
Well, that is part of what Kurt is here to chat about.
I'm here to tell you that Department of Health's totals we can spend it all and then the parameters you have within those buckets.
Yeah, so take it away.
I'm not a good doctor and I have no other parameters. I'm just telling you that.
But there may be, you know, in, on the last Board of Health, you talk about leaving some dollar amount. The US Board of Health can have a conversation next year as to where that can be distributed. That is some of the decisions that you may, you may consider today.
So like if I, I like the family nears partnership. You know, I'm an advocate, so I can take some of Kurt's money here and put it there.
Possibly, yes, but yes, all that's covered.
But again, within the buckets, there's limits on dollar amounts, et cetera. And so as we go through, we'll talk through some of that. First of all, I want to say that, what's that?
Is wretched watching?
Oh, you want to get credit for that? I'm sure she's watching.
There's a lot, there's a number of staff on YouTube right now and they're available if we need them, they can zoom in real quick. What I passed out, by the way, was org chart. I remember last, last week, before last, I can't remember exactly when or who. But somebody asked about the org chart. The top two pages are what we sent out on Friday. And then behind that is more of the detailed organizational web chart, org chart that's updated from the website. And you'll see at the top is an example, it says vital services, then it says environmental health. So all these pages behind there show the, the complexity of public health services that are provided, programs, et cetera. So that you get a flavor of what and how complex public health is with 150 approximately FTEs that are in the department. And, and I would say that 80, and we've said it before, and I think Robin's concurred with this, 85% of public health is grant funded, so external funding sources coming in to, to the department. So, so that is, is for you to review and then look at. I may refer to it occasionally, but it just shows some of the complexity that we have down here within the public health book, so to speak, or, or what we do for services. And then I think Jennifer helped create this, and this is an update. And it's going to go through a one, one page each side on foundational public health. It does a quick summary of what happened last year. And I have that also in what we'll walk through here in the documents I forwarded on Friday. We'll walk through some of the pieces and parts on this last year and then also this year's money and funding as well. And so as we do this, I wanted to talk about the objectives that I was going to propose for today was, one, and we already talked about it, request moving the foundational public health change request, however they come out of this discussion this afternoon forward, to what the Board of County Commissioners wants to move forward. Receive permission from the Board of County Commissioners to use the authorized indirect amount for fiscal costs for foundational public health. And then allow a portion of the foundational public health funding for Board of Health review that Ramiro talked about and that Board of Health can make recommendations to the Board of County Commissioners for expenditures. So as we do that, you see the org charts. And I wanted to start with just a quick overview. So if you have this, this document in front of you, it has a overview 2021, 2023 year to date. It gives year one and year two. And so I wanted to talk real quick about last year was one point. Well, we, that's, but there should have been a packet as well. Was this packet? Okay, that was submitted Friday. But, and we can refer to this one as well. The first one is the 1,413,000. This is the last year, the Board did, the Board of County Commissioners did the whiteboard exercise. This is the result of that. This is, this one is the funding, the 1.4 million dollars that moved forward. This is carryforward or maintenance level for the current budget. So in other words, this was appropriated and passed in December of 2021 by the board and this money is already obligated. Yes, ma'am.
I have a question, just a general question in terms of foundational public health. And I know we've been talking about admin and services, right? And I guess my questions is in terms of, you know, with this money that we're getting, is there a percentage that we can, that we charge admin fees from there? Or is that, you know, kind of included in the whole package? How does that work out?
That, that, that's, the admin percentage you're talking about is off the top of the foundational public health, on the amount. And if you want.
29%.
And so it's, and we break that out and it can show you on page, I want to say next page.
So me to say, other than that number, everything in these eight pages is on these two.
Okay.
Two pages, yeah.
Yeah, this will be easier to watch, will it?
Right, but, but you don't have the indirect amounts that we talked about. Do you want me to go through that?
Maybe if you could just.
You have your dollar amount here.
May I suggest, just go at the high level? What the 1.4 million dollars that were authorized during, by, um, provided for, as to where. There is additional conversation ready to the details that we can refer to the detailed sheet.
Okay, then I'll go, I'll go over this one. This is the one point, this is the current dollar amount that came in. 1.2 million, uh, 1.2 million for, starting July 1st of 2022 through June 30th of 2023. And so for this, it's broken down into the buckets that we have here in front of us. And I'm just going to go, its new award is the 1.2 million off of this one right here. And if you walk down, the bucket's been cross leveled as far as our, yeah, cross level to the midterm budget amount, the packet that we use. As example, M40-14, environmental health, that's walked down through here as well. So you get to the amount at the bottom. So if you start off on new award, assessment funds for each local health jurisdiction, that's task two, $60,000. We go down to CD case investigation, that's $378,000 for task five. Task six is investigation, outreach, evaluation, education. Task seven is APH, environmental, public health, climate change response of $80,000. Task eight is toxicology and environmental epidemiology. Task nine is system-wide data management improvement. Task 10 is maternal child health, child death review of $83,000. And then the last one, task 11, is life force infrastructure, $487,000.
So, so just at a high level, what you need So, so just at a high level, what you need to know is the Department of Health, Washington State Department of Health, said you're gonna get an extra 1.4 million dollars. And these are the buckets that you can spend in it. 1.2 million. And these are the buckets. This is how it's gotta be broke down. So whatever the Board chooses to spend this 1.2 million on has to remain in these buckets. So it's not as if you could take money out of the assessment funds and spend it on climate change.
And that comes from the contract from the Department of Health. So we can, we refer to as a consolidated contract. And that brings the, while it's briefed, and we have a lot of emails back and forth, Department of Health, when it comes down to the actual dollar amounts in each, it's varied a little bit. We go to the contract and what the contract stipulates, because that's what we have to follow. So, so I was gonna walk them across on the first one, task two.
Kurt, before you, those are the proposal for the one additional 1.2 million, right? I think it may be a good idea to walk through the first page. And this is the, what the Board already authorized. It may be a good refreshment to, say, for instance, out of the 1.4 million dollars additionally allocated, the 1.3 million, 228,000, the Board authorized the creation of the DEI Coordinator, Immunization Coordinator. See, just to walk us through what the Board, as a refreshment, just to create a baseline as to what the 1.4 million dollars has been, and then we may move to additional one. But that works.
Okay, that'll work.
Wasn't the DEI Coordinator approved with the caveat that a racial equity plan had to be put in place before?
That is correct, and I have the notes to talk through each of those areas as well.
So maybe just walk through the line items just for the Board to get up to that.
So, hold on. So one, I'm, I'm, I'm on the first page from what we did last year. Most of it falls under the first line, which is task one. And what is task one?
The foundational public health funds each local health jurisdiction. So they changed that to a, late in the fiscal year, state fiscal year, they changed that through the amendment process to a lump sum under task one of foundational public health funds to local jurisdictions.
So it was quite flexible in the first year, and the new money not so flexible?
Okay, but, but, I mean, I know this is complicated. I'm not trying to make it more complicated. But last year, when we were allocating this money, we had buckets, we had sub-buckets. And now, now it's just called all task one. But there were, there were sub-task ones, because a third of it could go to environmental health, and a third of it could go to this. So, so I mean, just calling it task one funds local health jurisdiction doesn't really tell us anything about what parameters we operated under last year.
And, and they changed the parameters. So what happened, what you had last October, Department of Health has changed through the amendment process to make it more flexible under the year-one funding, but you've already, the Board already obligated that year-one funding. And when you obligated it, that's carryforward and maintenance. Now it's in the maintenance level budget, because you use that to, I didn't give an example. The DEI Coordinator, EO Specialist Two, that is on hold until we can get, like Commissioner McHeed referenced, but the other positions are filled or obligated to be filled. And so you already have obligated those positions and that, those, that funding, yes, ma'am?
Kind of of a follow-up. I mean, for the training and travel, wouldn't that be under task 11, which is life force, infrastructure, and workforce development?
Four.
For the training and travel, the 50,000?
Well, that, I have it, we have it here because again, they changed, they changed the criteria for, through the amendment process, and they made it much more flexible.
In that case, task 11 was not included last year.
Right.
There's a new task that was created that. So that, that is a good point. And also I'd like to emphasize what Kurt just stated. The Board made some decisions. They outlined it here, they, they commits to creating new positions. So in a way, you are committing in the long term, at least the baseline, the majority of the 1.3 million dollars to do that. So I hope if the Board doesn't go back, I'd like to reassess, you know, the case coordinator for this opposition, because it's already filled. So staff is, is under the assumption that at least you will continue to support that baseline to a great extent.
And so the buckets changed. It'd be exactly what Ramiro said, and also the buckets changed throughout, of course. Part of the reason the buckets changed is the Department of Health got the funding to local health jurisdictions solely. A lot of the funding arrived after January 1st. In fact, I wanna say it was either towards the end of January or beginning of February, before the Board was actually able to even see the contract from Department of Health with the funding attached. So they made the buckets more flexible in that first year and changed a lot of the criteria.
So if I understand this, to the extent we haven't already created positions and filled them, there isn't, we're not constrained by the, by the same parameters from last year. Like let's say, let's say two of these positions had never been filled. If we wanted to, we could put all that money to one of the other tasks under task one, because those, those parameters have been made more flexible.
You, you could, but at the same time, we took the base budget or the carryforward, the maintenance level, as that was already obligated, and we moved that forward into 2023 as obligated.
You're right, yeah, yeah. You could have the latitude. If a position is unfilled, you absolutely have the latitude to redirect that money to the system.
So we don't need to worry about last year's buckets, because they're basically not there anymore.
They're not there, they're changed.
We made decisions based on them and embedded those decisions in the maintenance level.
Right.
Right.
So now we look at the next 1.4 million. And how does that get divvied up between the next 11 tasks?
Yeah, that's, that's, you need to look at the new award, the 1.2 million, the second column.
Right. And there's, there's all these new tasks.
And there, and what Department of Health did was created new tasks and said, okay, for the funding arriving on July 1st, and these are the new tasks, and this is where your funding has gotta fit into these new tasks. And then that's what we're here, is to, we put together some proposals on the budget, midterm budget, for recommendations to the Board of County Commissioners to talk through what the public health staff is recommending to, to spend.
But within those different tasks, what, what's the rule? A little bit to every task, or 10% to each of the 10 new tasks? Or could we put 100% of it on task six and leave all the other tasks empty? What is our, what is our side rails?
That's a good question.
Yeah, and that's, and that, this, this, your server is on this page. It's page six of 11. And what that starts to do is break down, as an example, your assessment. It has your amount in here. It tells you eligible bars code, what has to be charged to this particular task. And it says epidemiology and surveillance collects sufficient statewide community-level data under bars code 5562.10. So if you look at assessment all the way across, it gives allocation. It gives where the change request we have, and number that we associate with that allocation. And then it comes in, and you see under category assessment, it says eligible bars codes 562.10 and 562.11. And then that's where the Department of Health has it falling into that bucket, and it has to have to do with, in this area, epidemiology and surveillance collections, and sufficient for statewide community-level data. And then you see the next one down. FPHS, Community Health Assessment, conducted comprehensive community or statewide, and it cut, cut off a little bit, but assessment. So, so that's where it ties in.
I think what Commissioner Messers, if I may, is asking is, okay, if we were to look just at column number two on this, is the task number two, 60,000, is that a proposal from staff? Or that is the amount the state has set aside for that particular task?
That's the amount that we got into the bucket. And when you just look at the 50,000, 280, that's the amount that the staff is recommending based on, after we take the indirect amount for the fiscal and the indirect amount that's been, is right currently, we're authorized 29.7% for indirect, and we are recommending a little over 16% that we utilize for fiscal and for administrative support.
So curious, when we look at this breakdown into the various buckets of the new award, I'm assuming that those numbers came from the Department of Health.
Yep.
Where did they get their guidance on how to divide it up?
They got their guidance from the legislature, and the legislature had a work group that pulled together and pulled this information into, and recommendation to the legislature, and then the legislature appropriated based on these buckets out to the local health jurisdiction.
So separately appropriated?
Correct.
So they have no flexibility on how much goes in each bucket?
To, to my knowledge, correct.
Okay.
So it's just, it's just per bucket, then what, who gets hired?
Well, not who gets hired, it's per bucket, but we have different recommendations. It's not just FTEs, we're recommending other ones.
Well, right, how it gets spent, I should say.
Right, right, but it's per bucket of how it gets spent.
So we can't, we can't go, we can't move money between buckets. But as to the 80,000 for climate change, for example, I might decide that application analyst isn't the right use of the 80,000.
Correct.
But at the same time, as an example, if you look at assessment, and you can see case investigation, we have split an FTE, a pro, it's one's, the workload's 54% in one, 46% in the other, to try to maximize those buckets, because some of the buckets you can sell won't support an entire FTE. And we need people to, in order to implement these services within the community.
I see. So we're gonna go one by one now?
Sure. And what, and that leads us right into assessment funds for each local health jurisdiction, task two. And then 50,280, we, the proposal there, we've linked it to M4003. And we're recommending that that goes for a program assistant over here. And then that's the 50,280. And then the fiscal staff component of that, the indirect amount is 9,720 for that one.
And what would the program assistant do?
And...
Help on the disease control case investigation.
Right, and so they will do cases of communicable diseases will be investigated more efficiently. What it does is it allows the DCP team to take this person, to take some of the workload off of the case investigation, and also for the assessment. And those administrative tasks that they're taking off of them, as you read in the packet here, they turn around and... What's that?
Yeah, here's the description of the deposition. The line item.
The line item?
Page five, line item 19.
Right.
Isn't 50,000 though, like half an FTE with benefits and all that?
That's for, that's why saying it's taking 46, correction, 54% of the FTE. And then the other 46% of the FTE is down, and then the next one down.
Task five.
Yep. Correction, right, task five, case investigation.
So that'll make it...
So you're right, the total cost of that FTE is 92,500.
How can we're trying to figure out this minutia? I'm just trying to figure this out. Is there something, is the law says that we gotta figure this out?
No, the Board requested.
I've got some doctor friends, maybe I'll bring over here and let them sit in for me yourself.
The Board requested to go through this level.
Okay. I don't think we're qualified myself. I'm not qualified.
No, I, I, we just, we just followed under request. The Board asked to bring the foundational public health as part of the conversation, and what the opportunities the Board will have to put your touch, my, my, or put your priorities into the additional 1.2 million.
Okay, I mean, I can, I can understand that. I mean, I, like, I see Gretchen on there now. I'll have her come fill in for me. Guy can do the climate change thing. And I know that's a concern of his, so I, but the rest of this, I wonder if I've got the expertise to make the right decision. That's all I'm asking, and I'm questioning that. And, because I wanna do the best thing for the citizens of Thurston County. And I do not feel maybe I'm the right one to do some of this.
Well, I think it's also a possibility for you to know, right? Because if citizens are asking me, like, what did you spend the 1.2 million, right?
I don't have any problem with that.
And they ask, I mean, I've gotten asked about this, right? And I want to be able to respond to the questions that I'm getting on, this is the reason that we did this. And I might not be an expert on it, but at least I can tell them, you know, this is why I voted on this, instead of, this was just a proposal that staff put forth, and I just rubber stamped it, so.
But I'm hoping that we can trust our staff to make the right recommendations to do something, myself. I, I just, from my perspective here, I don't think I'm qualified enough to make, I wanna know everything that's being referred to. I, I, I'd like to have briefing, here's what we're doing, here's what we did for this. But I don't think that I'm qualified to tell Gretchen if she ought to have another nurse.
You are absolutely responsible.
I, I know I'm responsible, but I trust certain people to make those right decisions. It's just like when we sign off on our voucher, we're signing off on 4 million dollars or something. But there's just no way in the dickens that we can know each one of these. I have to depend on those folks from those divisions to make the right decisions. And I don't, maybe I'm hearing that this is so new to us that we're just not there yet. You're trying to get us familiar with it, maybe so, but I'd rather be out solving somebody's ditch problem, to be honest with you. Something I've got to bite into and do something with, construct it, than spin my wheels. I just think I'm spinning my wheels. I'm just kinda...
Well, it's the same thing, right? When you have public works dealing with the LMD things, right? We have to trust that staff is doing the best they can. And, you know, for me, it's kind of the same thing here.
For that one, I, I already know all about the league. So I guess that's why it's not too boring for you there.
So that's why, you know, for me, it's the same kind of level that we have to go through, and that's the way I see it. I'm respectful of the proposals that have been put forward, absolutely, but I wanna know on why. Because when I get asked by someone on why I voted that way, I wanna be able to respond in an educated manner.
So you, you're right, this is the proposal that the staff is bringing forth.
I just need to know that, I mean, I'm not gonna probably be able to micromanage it. But I need to hear that there's thought and logic that went behind the proposal, so I can feel, you know, to the extent we are rubber stamping it, we've got a basis for that. Because we've heard the, we've heard the rationale for why these particular positions are being picked. I mean, you know, I know a little more about climate change than, than, than I do about disease control and identification.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
But me too, that's why I say... So I'm really curious to know why that's the best use of that 80,000. You know, maybe Commissioner McHeed knows something more about maternal-child health, I don't know, or whatever, as, for example. We can all collectively try to ask questions and just make sure you guys are...
I, I'm just asking that we can just kinda get along with it and not, not get too down in the weeds.
Need to read the details, yep.
That's all, because I don't think I need that, because I don't think I'm the expert to make that decision.
Again, which is, the staff is trying to...
And I'm not, I'm not sure Kurt's the one to make that decision, but I, I see people on the screen. You know, we're, we're gonna start to talk about SEPI. Well, I'm gonna go talk to Art Starry a little bit.
And, and what I was gonna say is, for this first one, coming back to this program assistant to disease control investigation support. This person does a lot of the administrative work that currently is being done by licensed personnel. So you have someone who's paid less, so that the people who are paid more and are licensed can go out and see more patients, more clients out in the field. And so frees up their time from the administrative burden. And it also allows us to be able to, when there's a surge requirement necessary, this person can, this individual FTE can be applied towards that surge need that comes up. And I was gonna throw it out to Gretchen if you have anything else to add for the program assistant to disease control. Or Laura, whichever one who has that is sharing that out.
Yeah, I, sorry, you don't have my camera on there. But this is Laura, I'll, let me get my camera fixed. So the, you know, the other only thing I would add to what you already said is that we are experiencing an increasing caseload of, for example, sexually transmitted infections. A lot of people weren't getting routine care during the pandemic, so that's changing the landscape for us. And then also in regards to TB, we're seeing more and more immigrants, refugees from Ukraine and the like. So we expect those trends that might continue for a while. And having additional staff would be really helpful for us to serve the community.
I'm okay, I'm not, don't get me wrong, I'm not... I'm okay, I'm not complaining, don't get me wrong, I'm not complaining, we're doing this. I'm trying to figure out exactly why we're going to this level, that's all.
We're going to every level in each department. I, I'm not trying to micromanage, I, I feel like we're going through each level, through each department. So I, I don't know why public health is the difference between, you know, this, these positions and the rest of the positions that we've asked questions about.
I guess maybe, cause I know more about the rest of the government than you about this, it's my, it's my own.
You know, we all have our vices, I, you know, like, it's my own. I express my own frustration about the wireless policy, for example. I don't know about it, I don't wanna hear the details of the minutia, cause I don't get it and we all have our areas of weakness.
I do have a question for Laura though, um, in this, and I, I see the, the need for an assistant. But, um, would an, another nurse not be a better suit, especially with the rise in cases that you've stated? Would another nurse not help ease the workload, um, of, of this instead of a, a program assistant?
Yeah, that's a great question. Um, we actually are adding a couple case investigators that were already approved by the board in a previous budget period. So yes, although they are unlicensed staff, they'll be doing similar work, so, um, case investigation, this, the program assistant position is due to all the reasons we covered and the fact that the, the staff that are actually doing the case investigations, um, that, that stuff is growing and needs additional administrative support.
Great. Thank you.
Okay.
Okay.
Coming through. Okay, so, uh, moving on, we'll go over to, and I'm just gonna go then across the, or down the, across the top. You wanna follow the, uh, budget, uh, packets, M forty oh three was, we jumped to that one. I'm gonna go back to M forty fourteen, and that is, uh, climate change response, toxicology, environmental epidemiology, and then system-wide data management improvement. And this is the, uh, M forty, uh, fourteen is going back to the, uh, environmental health. This is application analyst one, and I am going to turn that over to Art since I know he's got the internal piece on that as far as, he can talk a lot of, more about it than I can as far as what, uh, the needs are. Art?
Um, good afternoon, and this is a, a continuation of that discussion we had, uh, I guess a few weeks ago now regarding the business applications analyst, and it comes down to the, the need that we have to be able to dedicate staff to both evaluate our current permitting system, which, uh, and there's other things to do too. But the big focus is this permitting system that we've got, Amanda, being able to adequately document that and then to prepare for and to implement its successor. Uh, we expect that this is gonna take a few years. Um, our experience in evaluating this, or actually, uh, the staff who worked on this with, um, IT and with CPED and others, uh, all the references they checked indicated that if you really want to be able to do this well, you need to have dedicated staff with the appropriate skills to be able to, to do the implementation uh, and the design of the work. It involves both evaluating the business processes that you currently have and then figuring out how to make improvements so that the new system works as well as possible, and then to have adequate staffing to support the new system that goes online. And again, it's, it's likely a multi-year process. Um, inter, interestingly enough, uh, during the conversation we had a few weeks ago when I got cut off due to the IT problems at the hotel, uh, I was at a meeting where people were talking about this very issue and they, they all pretty much agreed that if you want it to work well, you need to have staff dedicated to do this. So the, the departments that were implementing new permit systems, who were trying to just fit it in with their other staff, it took more time and they ended up doing many more corrections over the course of time. And so that's why we think this is a key piece, we think it fits in with, uh, part of the foundational public health services money that, that are categories. Um, we think that we can, uh, again, with the FPHS money and, uh, we can largely fill this position. We also have our obligations over the climate change and the, the, um, toxicology work that Kurt has identified. And we think we have the latitude to adjust how those funds are spent and still fund this position and do that other work. So that's, that's why we're proposing this. I kinda liken it to building, having an old factory that churns out permits and now we're gonna build a new one. And up until the time the new permit, the new permit factory gets ready to go, we need to keep operating the old one. It's gonna take time and effort to do that. In addition, we need to be able to understand the processes well enough to make sure that the new products that we're putting out are as meet the community needs and are done as efficiently and, uh, expeditiously as possible. And it, it takes time and effort to do this. Um, when I've talked to our existing staff, we don't have the capacity to do this right now.
Some questions, Art?
What?
There are some questions.
Oh, questions, fire away, please.
Did you have a question?
So, um, I do remember that conversation a couple of weeks ago and we used the analogy of a house. How they need is, is to how the internal rooms should be, you know, uh, designed and that's the need of this position. But also I believe this particular request has an end date of December two thousand and twenty-five. And at that point is when we evaluate the long term, is that correct?
I'm not sure, I wasn't, um, for sure, didn't know for sure there was an end date on it, but twenty twenty-five would be certainly a good start and then hopefully we'd be done by then and if not then.
And we will evaluate, because right now in the, the previous conversation the board had was in a different application is there is a need for, um, the implementation of a system, a new system as you well stated. And the ongoing maintenance will have to be assessed on.
I, I think that's fair, you know, we all hope that the system will be, uh, eat, self-sustaining and easy once it gets done. But sometimes they don't do that way, work that way, we'll find out.
Would you look the inquiry guide and see if this has an ending?
I was gonna say it does not have an end date.
It does not have an end.
But that was a discussion point, I think, last time we talked about this, but it was submitted originally back in August without an ending. And I think that was the discussion point that came up was, uh, December thirty-first of twenty twenty-five has an ending. And Art missed that part cause his wifi went down in his hotel.
All right.
Commissioner?
Uh, I'm not funding this with money that's dedicated to our climate change response. I didn't hear anything that had anything to do with climate change. There's no way I can look the community in the eye and tell them I spent that money on this. There's a task, system-wide data management improvement. Find another task, but I'm certainly not gonna support using climate change response money for this software upgrade.
And can I just respond to that real quick, Commissioner? Um, we've gone back, we've talked to the Department of Health and we talked to, uh, the work group that, that pulled all this together and they said this was eligible.
I don't represent the Department of Health, I represent the constituents of Thurston County.
I, I, I just, I just was saying that we've checked for the eligibility, that's all I'm saying is.
Okay.
I didn't wanna imply that it was eligible.
Good enough, but it's not eligible under my criteria. I got no comment at this point.
No, that's the, that's really the conversation, you need to have absolute.
Well, and, and that is the reason that we're going through the minutia is.
And, and you're right, just, just because it is an eligible activity, that's a mean the board is gonna support that.
Right.
And that's right on point.
That's right. So, um, my question about that was, was exactly what Commissioner Metzer just mentioned. I was curious how this, uh, ties into climate change. But, so. You wanna go through the other positions or would you like to vote on these as we go?
Well, um, I know that these positions are the ones, but obviously there's stuff that we would also like to fund as well. When are we gonna have, because for me, like.
That is part of this conversation, like, let's take this sixty-seven thousand dollars that would partially fund a business application analyst. If you'd like to do something different with that, now's the time to say.
Because I guess I'll just throw this out there, um, you know, when Patterson Lake was having all the algae blooms, I know a lot of their constituents reached out to me and they were asking, you know, they were not, they talked to public health and, you know, public health had let them know, like, we just don't have either the funding or the staffing for, for different things such as, um, you know, they requested, is there a possibility to get the notices out quicker? Like, the LMD steering committee, uh, the proposed one was doing a lot of the outreach, letting people know not to get into the lake, not to get their pets into the lake, because a lot of people didn't have the communication, um, they, or they hadn't been on social media or they hadn't seen the communication that came out from the county saying, you know, don't be on the lake. So they were wondering, well, is there, is there other possible ways of outreach? Um, there was also questions about the testing that, um, I believe the testing has to go to King County and then there's a big, like, a long waiting period on that and they're wondering, okay, is there a possibility that Thurston County can do the testing instead of having to send it out? Um, is there capacity to, to do that? So for me, you know, I thought those were, we're seeing algae blooms in our, all of our lakes. Um, now, I think more than, than we've seen in the past. I would like to be sure that, you know, those requests, you know, right now it's Patterson Lake, next year it can be another possible lake. Is that, is that something that we can, um, that we can talk about, you know? And of course, that's just one commissioner, right? And I was.
I'm with you.
But, um, you know, for me, I, I was like, okay, that's something that I would be interested in talking about. It's direct services to, to people, um.
And it's health related.
And it's health related, um.
So would you?
And it solves a problem that we don't.
So I'm trying to look and, and as we talk, I'm trying to look because, um, a couple of things is, is that, uh, Art, I don't know if you can talk to the testing and if it has to go to Seattle or King County?
Um, I can speak a little bit to that and actually, one of the things, so, uh, I think as Kurt and others have highlighted, this funding is coming, comes out late and the guidance on it comes out later. And actually, the climate group that I'm a member of, uh, hasn't met yet, so we're not exactly sure what this is gonna look like. But if you look at the kind of bullet point version of the work that we can do, in addition to, um, actually, they identified two key tasks, one is trying to deal with providing information during, uh, uh, wildfires and smoke events. They also identified, um, uh, toxic algae blooms, um, as something that we can do work on. That's one of the things we want to do, we don't have a work plan yet. Um, that's something that we're trying to look at and, and it's all part of this budget process too. So depending on what decisions are made about these three general categories of funding, uh, that'll help us decide how much effort we can spend on, um, you know, doing additional notifications, additional lab capacity, whatever it is that we can do to make the, meet the needs of the community on the, the algae bloom. So it's a, it's, it's a funded, some, it's an eligible thing within the, the climate change category and as is the smoke stuff and I think more broadly, climate change as well. We're not, and we're not obligated to use the King County lab, the, the thing is, there's not many labs that do the particular test that's necessary to, uh, determine whether algae blooms are toxic or not. Uh, right now, that's the service that's paid for by the state, so we take advantage of it. Um, we can certainly look at other, at alternatives, um, and depending on the, I guess, the direction of the board.
And, and so I guess the question I would have is if the board wants us to come back with another proposal for this, because we have until June thirty to spend these funds, otherwise we have to turn them back into the state. So it has to be, so I'm just asking what would be the guidance of the board if you want us to come back with a proposal that's different? Um, that's, um, to address what you're talking about and I'm just trying to get, understand which direction.
I, I was under the impression we had to get this done by the middle of December, for this whole thing.
You have to make, you have to make decisions on the board's preliminary budget no later than the end of this week.
Including, uh, creating the proposed positions if the board agrees. Right, and if, if you don't agree in creating a position based on your here, you don't have to.
That's right, and what we can do is put it in reserve.
And, uh, and in this case, you know, the, the application analyst, the question is, is it a full-time position or half-time position?
Well, I, I, from my perspective, I see where Commissioner Meehan is going and I'm gonna be her second vote, it looks like, on that. That's, I'd like to get something done that's productive and it does, you know, accomplish something and addresses a problem.
So there, there, if, if I may, there is a need at the department to support implementation of that. Of Amanda, the new permitting system. There is a need for somebody to dedicate, as Art stated, uh, for somebody to dedicate and go through the, the system architecture to make sure that that application is, is well set. Whether the distribu, whether the distribution of, of the funding, that is, that is a little bit different. But if the board is, is in support of this position, we'll find a different way.
But I agree with Commissioner Metzer, it doesn't really fit under the climate change response, like, I don't.
We haven't heard what you are gonna spend the forty-nine thousand for state of management improvement on. I, that's gonna be important to me. Is there also a non-supplant type of a, type of a parameter here with these funds?
The parameter, the parameter non-supplant is, is that if you take the money and put it somewhere where it's already existing, you must take that existing funds and use that for public health. You cannot change the, that, the, uh, direction of the money outside of public health. So the intent of the legislation is to, uh, enhance public health services in the community.
It's pretty much a non-supplant.
Yeah.
I mean, what you could do is somewhere in public health, find the money somewhere else in public health and use foundational public health if it's eligible for that area, free up some other foundational, uh, some other public health funding that could go towards this, uh, business application analyst. But, but it'd have to be all within public health, it can't be redirected to a different department.
There's fifty-six thousand unallocated from the, um, one point three million that is in task one. Could that be used? Could it go to task, yep, instead of the sixty-seven?
So, so the proposal for that is to take that funding towards the, um, fiscal indirect amount. And so, which it lowers the fiscal indirect amount, if it, are you talking about the year one?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Yep, year one, that's, the proposal for that is, um, inside your packet here, is to take that towards the fiscal, uh, indirect costs and reduces the indirect cost down to the sixteen, uh, percent, sixteen point. Yep, so, so go down to sixteen point.
I, I have a suggestion on this position, if I may. Uh, take the sixty-seven thousand of the climate and just put it on the last column of the reserve for future consideration.
Yep.
Uh, I, I don't think you need to wrestle over that, I think just park it in there for future conversation both.
Let Rebecca give us her few cents when she has that.
Right, so, move that and my suggestion will be to fund this position as, as a half-time in order to meet the half-time requirements of the remainder out of task eight. You know what I'm talking? So if the position is a hundred nineteen full-time, let's say, uh, sixty thousand dollars is part-time, forty-one thousand dollars is funded by, uh, task nine, the remainder out of task eight. And move the, the, uh, the funding for task seven, which is the climate mitigation response to the reserve column for future consideration.
Where is that? Oh, cause there's already, there's already a reserve there on task eight.
Correct, and there, there's a four hundred and seventy-three thousand, uh, seventy-nine dollar reserve already established for, uh, the Board of Health to meet and re, make recommendations to the Board of County Commissioners on how those funds under the foundational public health, um, criteria should be spent. In other words, um, and that's to go in forward for January, beginning next year, January first. It'll be a short timeframe to spend those or, uh, expend those funds. But that's designed for the Board of Health, which includes the county commissioners here, to have input into recommending how the four hundred and seventy-three thousand dollars should be spent.
That's the department proposal.
Yes, that's the department proposal, correct.
How come I'm hearing the difference between we gotta get this done by December and we gotta get this done by June?
Does, does the Department of Health?
You, what, the county budget must be adopted by the end of December. This grant has to be spent by the end of June of twenty-three.
Why don't we just say we're gonna do public health, uh, one million, three hundred thousand dollars and figure it out when we get to pass this? I don't, I don't see why we're arguing over this now.
You need to determine, because this is your county budget and you need to make the decisions about the county budget now. And that includes any money coming in from el, external and how you're gonna spend it next year. That is exactly why.
So go, go back to this position if I may, my, my proposal.
Please, cause I'm confused, I was trying to.
Yeah, so my proposal on the M forty fourteen. On that column, le, uh, eliminate the sixty-seven thousand forty from task seven, which is the climate response. And move that to the reserve column for future consideration. For talking purposes, let's revise the, uh, the task eight from eleven thousand to twenty thousand. And, uh, and leave the, uh, task nine as presented. So the result of that, well, you, you will consider finding a half-time position for the support of the implementation of Amanda.
And then, Art, would that, would that kind of cover your needs?
It's better than nothing.
Um, I think, you know, anything is helpful. I don't know how, I, I, I don't think it's, I mean, to be completely honest, we were hoping for the full FTE because I think that's really what it's going to take. I don't know how effective will be recruiting a half-time position. Sometimes you get, you're fortunate, sometimes you're not. Um, and that's my, I guess, my bigger concern is trying to recruit, um, a half-time position. Um, that's, so, and the, this work will be, well, assuming we can get a contract signed with whichever vendor is being chosen, uh, this could be, this could be, work could be starting pretty quickly.
And, and I was going to say, it is, the workload is full-time. I mean, we're talking about a project on December thirty-first, twenty twenty-five, but we're, the analysis that's been done by the environmental health team shows it's a full-time workload. And if, all we're going to do is take more people away from providing those services to the public when we try to pull them back in to make up that workload.
But, but the bottom line is, if I may, uh, you hear the conversation the board is having. So where the additional sixty thousand dollars will come from? If it's not going from the climate mitigation response?
No, I understand, but the question was, as I was answering Commissioner Mead's question, is this a decision?
Well, if you're, if you're trying to jam sixty thousand dollars in a category that doesn't fit, which is what was happening, why wouldn't you take it from the biggest one, the three hundred and seventy-eight thousand, task five? I mean, then you've still got three hundred and eighteen thousand dollars there to deal with that, most of which you had in reserve for the Board of Health over here in the far column anyway. So if we're putting a square peg in a round hole type of thing, why wouldn't we do that that way?
Why wouldn't it come from infrastructure? I mean, and we're, we're task eleven, there's a hundred and thirty thousand in, in reserve.
Yeah, with that, either way.
Why wouldn't it come from that, like?
And, and I'd have to go back and ask to make sure it's eligible out of there because in, and, uh, on the life course, I was going to ask if, uh, Gretchen, I think that's your area is you can talk a little bit to that.
Sure, good afternoon, commissioners. Um, with life course, it is specifically allocated for chronic disease, maternal child health, injury and violence prevention, and access and linkage. And it can't be used for other areas. But we, I'm wondering, Kurt, I'm not sure, last year or with the previous budget, there was tasks around reinforcing capacity. And I'm not sure where that, how that folded into the current year, but.
Better had folded into the current year because that was board direction.
That, that was board direction for a year ago. I think what Gretchen's asking is how does that come into these tasks right here? And, and then what the challenge is, is the, the con con is change the tasks to what we have in front. We took this directly out of the consolidated contract.
But the amount that the board dedicated last year is rolling forward into this year.
Correct, correct, correct.
So I'm not opposed to a full-time position. I, I'm just in agreement that it shouldn't come out of the climate change response. If there's a possibility that we could get the remaining sixty thousand from another bucket, then, um, you know, I would be, if not, then, you know, half-time it is unfortunately, um, but.
And I can interject, that was going to be my, uh, I guess, request, is if we could have the opportunity to look to see if there's some other way to pay for the rest of this thing and come back to you, that would be, I mean, whether it's FPHS or some other funding source.
Come back by Wednesday morning.
I'd appreciate that opportunity.
By Wednesday morning, Art.
Wednesday morning, okay.
Sounds good, Art, thank you.
Before you leave this, um, uh, commissioners, um, in this, we're going to task eleven. I'm just wondering, the possibility to, we are having issues with the concrete goods and the DCYF contract. I'm wondering if, uh, if those activities should be covered, could be covered under foundational public health. Task eleven.
So, and, and I'm going to come back and say that I don't know the answer to that, except that I do know that foundational public health is for services that are not provided anywhere else. And if, uh, those services are provided by another entity, then typically it's not eligible for foundational public health. But we can check and determine whether or not that is, and find out by Wednesday morning.
Isn't this Gretchen's field?
Gretchen, do you know off the top of your head?
Uh, I honestly, I, I don't know, um, with the concrete goods. I, I definitely could look into it. I think one of the challenges we'll face with it is that we, with those concrete goods, we were to serve Lewis, Mason, and Thurston Counties. And so there's that question of whether we can use these funds for Thurston in a different county. I mean, that would be a second part to that question, I guess. But I will, I will see what I can find out.
If it's an eligible item, the other counties can also make a decision, the same decision with their foundational public health, to emphasize that.
Okay.
Okay. What about the other positions on this list?
Do we, I'm sorry, do we want to go and vote on positions, Robin? We kind of just-
Yeah, we go, uh, because this relates to line items on your spreadsheet. So we are, are asking for you to-
Okay, so we, nineteen, which is the first one we reviewed, we did not vote on, which is the program assistant to disease control investigation support. And that's on page, Commissioner, page five, Commissioner Edwards.
Line item nineteen.
Line item nineteen.
Good, right here.
That way we can say there, I mean.
Move, move along, right. Um, so this position's being paid out of task two, task five. And it's a program assistant to support the disease control and investigation areas. So I see one thumb up, two thumbs up, three thumbs up, and that is M four oh oh three.
Robin?
Yes.
On that one there, on their sheet, for M four oh oh three, their total is ninety-two, five eighty-nine. On our sheet, it is eighty-nine, nine one four.
Yep, we'll figure out the, the variables.
The discrepancies, okay.
Oh, is that the one?
No, it's a different one.
No, that's a different one. Oh, I was, I, I was shoving things in a hurry on Friday night.
Thanks, thanks, General. There may be one or two a little bit obvious in there with that.
So what, will we have more wiggle room? Is that?
No, I, I don't know who, I will have to take a look.
Well, we'll double-check the numbers.
It could be, Commissioner, just a transfer piece. If I'm transferring numbers, sometimes I get dyslexic, so, um, okay.
All right, so, line twenty on the big sheet at the top of page six is M four oh oh six. That's one of the fiscal staff, it's in the fiscal column. And we've had a conversation, there, there are, what, core fiscal FTEs?
Yes.
Go ahead.
So, just with the conversations we've had, but I'm also hearing, here an administrative assistant two. So is it core fiscal staff or is it admin assistance?
Indirect is for the administrative fiscal pieces that are not program-related. The, the program assistant is a program, program-related FTE that supports just that program. The fiscal staff, it comes in under indirect cost that's approved by Department of Health. And that's the one where we talked about, um, having two, a approval rate of twenty-nine point seven percent from the Department of Health, but we're only requesting sixteen point two percent to fund the fiscal staff that we're requesting.
So this is not for fiscal staff, it's for administrative assistant two?
The line, line twenty, M four oh oh six. Can I jump in? That this is an admin assistant? Oh, Robin or two? Go ahead, Robin. Yeah, Robin, yeah. So, uh, the title is for an administrative assistant two, but the intention is that that position will be working, uh, to help us organize our grant activity. So we currently have a hundred and seventy-five or some odd open contracts and, uh, I don't have the number in front of me, something like thirty-nine or forty gra- active grants. And pretty much every day, I haven't taken account, but off the top, there's probably twenty or thirty emails that come in related to all of that activity. So we'd like to have a person to help organize us. Uh, keep track of all of the emails that have been sent in, all of the requests, all of the report dates, all of the due dates, um, and keep things organized and circulating. That's the primary, oh, that's the primary, um, objective for the position. So they could ask for a, a fiscal assistant to do this work at a higher dollar amount, but it's finance-related.
And that's why it's eligible for indirect. I misunderstood your question, Commissioner. But I will dovetail on what some of Robin and Gretchen just said is, in twenty seventeen, the public health budget was twenty-six point nine million dollars. In, in twenty twenty-three, it's going to be sixty-two point four million. That's a hundred and thirty-two percent increase. Um, we've, we've got forty-nine active grants, a hundred and seventy-five active contracts, over five thousand invoices processed each year. I mean, the, the, and the amount of workload, I will tell you that we're two years behind our Medicaid reimbursement to the federal government. I've got notices, and I'm going to call it in the civilian parlance, debt collectors from the state coming to me as a director in July of this year, saying, we're going to be putting you on thirty-day notice, you're not meeting your fiscal obligations. And so we've got a serious situation in public health. And I've traced it back to over eight years ago. And there's a whole lot of reasons, but we can, you know, but at the end of the day, we're still going to come back to today, where we have this issue staring at us and staring in the front of us. The other piece I will tell you is, I got a note from our own county treasurer, Jeff Cadman, who sent me a note informing me that the deposit transmittals in seven of the last eight years have been routinely late. He said, this is especially problematic because the funds received from the state cannot be, uh, put into appropriate or proper accounts. And he said, a single transaction can be represented by hundreds of thousands of dollars. And we are routinely late on those, that goes back seven out of eight years. And so I'm just here to tell you, there is a fiscal crisis in public health. And these four positions, and the Board of County Commissioners already approved two on September thirteenth, and we're very appreciative of that, and they're out on the street for recruitment. But we were asking to remove some end dates on some of these positions. We're asking for two more positions so that we can get our fiscal house in order and not leave literally hundreds of thousands of dollars on the table or be late continuously with our stakeholders.
I, I'm not going to get in, in depth on this thing, but this is something, when I came in about six years ago, is a problem, and that fits with what he's talking about. So you guys wouldn't be up on this, but it's me that could.
And it goes back eight years or longer. Robin Campbell and I have talked and, and the need for this. This is, this is not just us coming up with a wish list. We have done the analysis, and I apologize, I should have probably gotten you this information earlier, but.
It's in the fiscal staff column.
It's just a better word.
Because it's, yep, there's, there's like-
And I, I like to echo Kurt's, um, comments. You know, there's a, a lot of administrative needs, you know, to bring it up to, what do we need to be in addition to the fiscal staff that we're requesting? And there is an opportunity to rebuild this portion of public health at this point in order to address all the demands, not just the additional money, but also the demands and perhaps the issues that we have, uh, faced in the past. So, um, and I know that sometimes, uh, at the surface, there appears to be just an administrative position, but it is, look from the bundle point of view as to what the proposal the department has brought for, for you to consider. It, it's just this, this bundle is trying to address a fundamental need in the department.
So, the, usually when you get like a bunch of new money and they let you take, you know, ten percent, fifteen percent, you somehow you said twenty-nine.
Twenty-nine percent.
I've never heard anything like that, but.
Oh, it's, it's a common.
Okay, but whatever. The point is, um, the point is that that is, I would imagine, to manage this new money coming in. But you're describing a situation where we had a fiscal deficiency well before any of this new money came in. So is that covered by the two that we already authorized? And the two here are going to be to deal with the new money? Or do we need all of this plus to deal with this, this eight-year, decade-long deficiency in fiscal, you know, power that we haven't had? So my question clear?
Yes, yes, sir. Um, so the, the answer to your question is, these four positions, two are re-approved, two are requesting, are part of the one point four million and part of the one point two million that we just got in, also part of housing that we just got in this year. So all of that is paying for these four positions. We're not using this funding that came in to pay for the other seven positions that are in public health. But at the end of the day, at the same time, um, it is addressing an issue because as this new money came in and there were previous problems, it just compounded those problems. We've done the assessment, we believe these four positions will help us get to the point where we can be sustainable. And then, I think, uh, last week, uh, somebody, I think it was you, Commissioner Mead, wanted to know if this was enough or if we needed more. And the answer is, we think it's enough, but we can do the assessment once we get everybody on board and into their, doing their job. And then we do an assessment to see if we're maintaining, uh, and being able to be fiscally responsible. If we need more at that point, we can come back. At this point, I want to see how we come up with the four positions.
I guess my caveat on all of this would be, you know, if you move forward on these positions would be, you know, also depending on what we get from the internal audit, right? If we have to shift positions to fill those needs. You know, if it's been a systemic issue that we've had for ten years, um, then I'm not, you know, again, I'm not sure how much these positions will really fill that gap. It will probably help, but I, I think there's going to probably have to be some shifting along, so. Um, okay, let's move forward. Uh, commissioners on item twenty, thumbs up?
Yeah.
Yes, yes, yes. Thank you. Okay, on position twenty-one, which is environmental health and removal of the position end dates, Kurt just kind of covered those.
Yeah, that's part of the baseline.
And these, are these two empty or have they already been filled?
I believe they've been filled, haven't they, Art? Can you jump in real quick?
Yes, they've been, all those positions that were authorized last year have been filled.
Okay, so.
These are the, any, the water quality positions.
Yeah.
So they've been filled already?
They've already been filled. Questions?
It's part of the one point three million from last year. So it becomes the baseline.
So thumbs up, one, two, three thumbs up, great. Moving now.
Next is twenty-two, environmental health.
That's the one that we're going to come back to on Wednesday with an alternate funding source.
And we can, we're going to look at that and give you- Yes, and we'll come back Wednesday morning.
All right? Yep. Uh, then twenty-three is the, um, disease control and prevention. This is the second accountant or the fourth accountant. If we count the first two that you've already approved. This is the discussion you're having on the need for finance staff. There's one thumb up, two thumbs up, Commissioner Magia?
That's twenty-three.
Three thumbs, yep, that's line twenty-three. And then-
Almost there with foundational public health, so.
Yeah, yeah, good job. Um, then we're on line twenty-four, and this is the community health nurse two. It's item number M four oh two four, that's being paid a hundred percent out of task ten.
Now there's someone less.
Eleven as well.
Ten and eleven.
Oh, sorry.
Yep.
It's, it's split.
Yeah, ten and eleven.
Yeah, ten and eleven, whoops.
And, and so, uh, is this forty twenty-four?
Community health nurse.
Yes, okay. And so Gretchen, I believe that's your area, and I, I could try, but I think you do much better than I do. So you want to just talk to that just briefly?
Quickly, quickly, you've got less than a minute.
Uh, just to confirm, this is the child death review position, is that correct?
Yes, correct.
Um, so child death review is, um, an opportunity. It pulls community members and staff together to review cases and utilize the data that comes out of this, uh, review and, and look for ways to implement strategies in the community to prevent future, um, future deaths of other children. So an example would be, uh, reviewing suicide cases and identifying maybe some gaps in the community or, you know, ways to implement different strategies to reduce future suicides. Um, another, another case would be making sure that, usually at these reviews, we have healthcare providers, community resources. The, the nurse would be facilitating the review- The the nurse would be facilitating the review, law enforcement, a number of different people that.
All right, three thumbs up.
You got two thumbs.
Thank you.
Top talking, you got your thumbs up.
So, sorry, so sorry, we need to.
Thank you.
You got to go, let me tell you.
Yeah.
Thank you, right there.
Yeah, it's not on your head. Um, line twenty five is M four oh two five. This is improving access to healthcare resources and it is being paid a hundred percent out of task eleven. Commissioners, do you have any questions about this one? Working with schools, nonprofit and healthcare providers. To remove barriers to.
I mean, despite the the title doesn't, the title sounds quite broad, but Gretchen made it sound a lot, a lot more narrow.
Mm-hmm.
And so I'm going to have to defer to her expertise under those narrow guidelines of what fits, so. You want this, Gretchen?
Just say yes.
Yes.
Thumbs up, one, two, three, thumbs up.
Just to access and link it. This is, you know, Thurston County is a designated health professional shortage area, so.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Yeah.
So line number six is the maternal child health education and outreach specialist. Again, a hundred percent out of the life force workforce development. Um.
Three thumbs up.
Three thumbs up, excellent. See, even I didn't need to finish. Yay. Um.
Three thumbs up.
Thank you so much.
The next item is on top of page eight. It is treatment sales tax.
Item twenty eight.
Twenty seven.
This is a, so we're out of foundational public health.
Line twenty seven. Well, there's one more foundational public health.
Could we address that?
Oh, sure. Let's move to line twenty eight, which is to remove the end date on the current fiscal staff. This is.
That's for housing. That's for housing.
Public housing.
Oh, that is for.
End for housing, yeah.
Yeah, we can probably begin that in twenty.
So why did I?
I don't know why you thought that.
Because, sorry.
But that's just removing the end days. They're they're currently supposed to go away to summer thirty first, twenty twenty three. But the, as you've seen, the funding, the revenue keeps coming in and the workload is going to remain well beyond twenty twenty three.
Yep.
Okay.
Thumbs up for.
Twenty eight.
Line twenty eight.
We skipped twenty seven.
We we did because I thought this was foundational public health, but I was wrong. But line twenty eight, yes, one, two, three, yes, excellent. Now let's go back to twenty seven. It is treatment sales tax. It is to fund services at the Thurston Mason Behavioral Health Administrative Services Organization or the BHASO. They had been receiving True Blood funds. And now that that money is gone, they are asking to backfill with TST money. This has the recommendation of the TST Advisory Committee and the fund has more than adequate fund balance to cover. One, two.
I think I'm.
You're gonna vote no?
No.
Let's get this to the conclusion, Commissioner.
I just have to like.
Oh, that's it, the end of the day.
I was like a keep your general funding.
Yeah, class, we're almost done. Um.
Did I say three?
Yes.
Yes, there are three. Line twenty nine is from the veterans' fund.
Everybody burped up on that comment.
This is the proposal for the Bento program. It addresses food insecurity and then provides peace management for wraparound services. We have had the first meeting with the Veterans Advisory Committee. They have asked for additional information. You have asked for additional information. And so the proposal at this point is to put it in the budget so that if the board does approve this program, we could go forward. If you don't approve the program, in the long run, then the money would just go back to fund balance.
I approve if contingent on the advisory board's opinion.
Great.
You guys put the other.
Let's do three thumbs up on this. Line thirty is for housing and it has you removing end dates for, that should be housing, not hosing staff. There is. There's no money attached to this because the the end date is the the end of twenty thirty, but this will help with recruiting.
Yep.
So twenty eight and thirty are together, right?
Yep, they're they're future, but they remove end dates from positions. Yes, yes, and yes.
Yay.
Fabulous. So the only item that on this list that we need to come back to on Wednesday is the one item for foundational public health. Otherwise, we are done with the non-general fund policy items other than the bonus for county employees. And that will come when we talk about, yes, compensation package on Wednesday.
What about these two in Art's, your health?
All of that we will come to on Wednesday, Wednesday morning. So on REIT two, you have your financial plan and we will be asking you to review the financial plan. And proposing potential changes to what you've seen so far on ARPA. We are going to ask you. And I will explain again about the FTE swap that will create capacity in the general fund. But you will need to choose where we reduce the earmarks. That is why we're looking at ARPA. And then we will launch into general fund and that will be Wednesday. Okay.
And that in between now and then, that list I was talking about would be.
You have it all in your packet. Yep, it's all in there.
Oh, so it's on the, it's on the computer. We're, what's it called?
It is. Those are, um, they are called part four and part five for the big decision ones. So what are your numbers? Uh, twenty two and twenty four. Documents twenty two and twenty four. All right, and we'll wrap it up for today.
Okay, it is four oh five P M. Thank you all so much. Uh, thank you to the public health staff. Thank you, Kurt, for being here this afternoon and walking us through that. With that, we are adjourned.
Thank you. Good work.